I'd like to call the Fitchburg City Council to order. Please be advised that FATV is conducting audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast. I would ask anyone else in the audience who is recording this meeting to please identify themselves by record now by standing and stating their name and address. Is there anyone here wishing to do so? Seeing none, I now ask for Counsel Fleming to lead us in the salute to the flag.
(Inaudible)
Madam Clerk, could you please conduct the roll call?
President Kuschmerich.
Present.
Counselor Boishman.
Present.
Counselor Clark.
Here.
Counselor Donnelly.
Yeah.
Counselor Fleming.
Here.
Counselor Green.
Present.
Counselor Caddy.
Here.
Counselor Squallia.
Present.
Counselor Walsh.
Here.
Counselors, Mayor Dina Tally extends his apologies for not being with us this evening.
He's the keynote speaker at the Sizer Schools graduation this evening across town. He's asked H.J. Terigni to join us as well, just so there's representation from the mayor's office. So unfortunately, he will not be with us, but he is in spirit. Public forum, anyone wishing to speak on any matter on the agenda may do so for not more than two minutes. If you're addressing public hearing petitions, you'll have an opportunity to speak at this time. Please approach the center table and identify yourself by name and address for the record and the item number on the agenda which you are addressing. Does anyone wish to speak at this time? Seeing -- oh, sir, come forward.
It's always a party. Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Pat Scorzelli, 78 Maple Avenue, Leominster, Massachusetts. Quick introduction, for the last three years, I've been involved in permitting medical and recreational marijuana facilities. I've been to the West Coast, been to the East Coast, seen some good, seen some bad. I applied Fitchburg for -- it's actually following its position on being cautious yet forward-thinking in what you've done so far. I actually have a client who has shown a great interest in central Massachusetts, Fitchburg being key position, and I've looked at what you're doing and pretty much on 031-18, I guess I'm just trying to offer that before you close and finalize your zoning ordinances, you should allow for a process or consider a process that lets people come in by way of special permit or granting of waivers, that even when they're not in necessarily the proper district as outlined, like for example, the Central Business District, that you at least allow them to give you a presentation and basically hear it on the merits. A lot of places in the country, West Coast right now, LA, I just got back from there not too recently, they are taking that type of approach where instead of just saying you can be here or here, they're saying if you think you can be somewhere that we don't think you should be, come and show us. Hopefully, we've identified a spot here. I've worked, actually just met Tom tonight, and been working with Mike O'Hara. They've been very helpful. We think we've found a location not far from Main Street that we could improve. We would have to come in front of you for a waiver because of the residential setback, but as I've done very successfully somewhere else with proper buffers, some linkage, and usually a robust host agreement, you find your way around a lot of things that went from being blighted areas to being renovated. What's happened to this industry has really made it interesting. If you go to Colorado, some of these now look like GNCs until you walk in and know it's being sold there. The storefronts look good, they're bright, they're, you know, the days of this being, you know, a hidden, a forbidden business are long gone. So I just would like to say that, and I'll be before you because I think we do have a good location and look forward to working with the city.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak during the public forum at this time? Seeing none, if there are no objections, we'll now hear an oral report from the Appointments Committee, which met earlier this evening, June 5th, 2018. It had three reappointments before the committee. The first two for the Planning Board for terms to expire January 1st, 2021, for Mr. Andrew Van Hozenga and Ms. Paula Karen. That was passed unanimously, as was Ms. Sharon Tardif for a term to expire June 30, 2019, to the Disability Commission.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion and second to approve the report from the Appointments Committee. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous, motion carries. We'll now hear a report from the Committee on Records, Counsel Donnelly.
Thank you, Mr. President. Have you viewed the records? And they appear to be in order.
Move the Committee on Records report be accepted.
Second.
I have a motion and second to accept the report from the Committee on Records. Speaking on the motion, Counsel Caddy.
It's my understanding that my, before I left on vacation, my request to hold my petition was not granted. I would like a moment to speak about that.
Counsel Caddy, unfortunately, you could speak to -- unfortunately, you can't speak to the records. Any comment would have to be restricted to procedural matters or points of contention.
Could we make an exception, Mr. President?
Counsel Caddy, that wouldn't be germane to the Records Committee report at this time.
Okay, then I have a question about the records.
You may.
What was the vote and who voted not to hold? Who voted to hold my petition and who voted not to hold?
Okay. We can do -- it's, Counsel Caddy, it's in the minutes.
I don't have them with me. Everyone should have them.
Okay, then. Now, can I be heard?
It's posted publicly and unfortunately, Counsel Caddy.
It's my understanding that during your meeting, that people were allowed to speak and they spoke over their two minutes granted time. I'm a city councilor. This petition I put in September 22nd, 2014, four years ago. I wasn't given the opportunity to speak. I wrote something down to talk to you about tonight, and I wrote it because I didn't want to insult anybody, but I want my feelings to be known by this council.
Counsel Caddy, that wouldn't be an appropriate use of this time. I'm sorry.
Are we sure you know that's true?
Counsel Caddy, should we do that? That would provide an open forum moving forward for any councilor to speak on any matter that happened on the agenda previously. That would allow for the rehashing and sentiment of every councilor on any issue from any --
So at the end of this meeting, I will have my hand raised to read it at that time.
Nor, and the city solicitor, Assistant City Solicitor also reminds me that this, because this issue is not actually posted on the agenda, that would also be a violation of the open meeting law. Does it allow for a rehashing of an issue that's already been voted upon? I have a motion and second to accept the Committee on Records report. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? One in opposition, motion carries. 163-18, Independent Auditor's Report from Melanson and Heath for the year ending in June 30, 2017.
Move the report be placed on file at the City Clerk's office?
I have a motion and second to place 163-18 on file at the City Clerk's office. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous, motion carries. Finance Committee, meeting of May 22nd, 2018, Counsel Dina Tally.
Thank you, Mr. President. Finance took up 141-18. There being hereby as appropriated the sum of $9,500 to be charged against available funds and credited to DPW Highway Personal Services Summer Help. That was adopted. 142-18, there being hereby as appropriated the sum of $10,000 to be charged against available funds and credited to Assessor Expense Contracted Services. That was adopted. 143-18, the City of Fitchburg approves the expenditure of funds from the Mass Executive Office of Public Safety and Security Earmark and the approximate amount of $50,000 for the purpose of said earmark, which is to support handicap accessibility improvements at the police station, as well as camera and door security upgrades at the police station and city parking garages. That was adopted. 144-18, the City of Fitchburg approves the expenditure of funds from the New View Communities Gift and the approximate amount of $45,000 for the purpose of said gift, which is for the reconstruction of various sidewalks on High Street and Marshall Street. 145-18, the City of Fitchburg approves the expenditure of funds from the Mass Department of Environmental Protection Clean Energy Results Program, Gap 2 Funding Grant and the approximate amount of $200,000 for the purpose of said grant, which is for the design, purchase, installation, and other ancillary work of an inline turbine at the Water Division Narrows Road Pressure Reducing Valve Station. 146-18 was similar to the last one I just read. 147-18, the City of Fitchburg approves the expenditure of funds from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs Drinking Water Protection Program and the amount of $137,500 for the purpose of said grant, which is for the purchase of property on Piper Road in Ashby, and for the cost of purchasing a conservation restriction on a certain parcel of land on Crocker Road in Ashby. That was adopted. And lastly, there being hereby as appropriated the sum of $137,500 to be charged against fund balance reserved for land purchases and credited to Water Capital Expenditures Land Purchases, which is in relation to the last petition I read. That was adopted.
Motion to accept the Finance Report.
Second.
I have a motion and second to accept the Finance Committee report. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous, motion carries. Legislative Affairs Committee, meeting of May 29th, 2018, Counsel Walsh.
Thank you, President Kuschmerich. Petition 067-18, Counselor Michael Kuschmerich to require all short-term rental units to register and have a regular inspection as outlined in the attached document. That was ordered to be held for further consideration by the committee with consultation with appropriate department heads and commissioners. Petition 128-18, Counsel Elizabeth Walsh to establish branding guidelines for use of social media by city council members to avoid open meeting law violations and to provide guidance in promoting a public image for the City of Fitchburg. Refer to the council as a whole.
Move the Legislative Affairs Committee report be accepted.
Second.
I have a motion and second to accept the Legislative Affairs Committee report. Speaking on the motion, Counsel Green.
I just have a question about 067-18. Short-term rentals, is that the Airbnb discussion?
Yes, that was the Airbnb discussion.
Thank you.
I have a motion and second to accept the Committee's report. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous, motion carries. Public Safety Committee Oral Report, meeting of June 5th, 2018, Counsel Green.
Yes, petition 129-18, Ralph Al Hayek, One Stop Auto Group LLC, to petition for a Class II dealer's license to be located at 91 Laurel Street. That was granted. Petition 030-18, Counsel Amy Green on behalf of Carol Taylor Kazangin, to, one, make requests to look, request to make the lower end of Romano Ave a one-way street, widen the intersection of Wanusunuck Road onto South Street, install sidewalks on Canton Street, paint double yellow lines on Canton Street to prevent passing and slow speeding traffic down. That was agreed to send to Commissioner Laxo for determination on how to move forward with any and all of those requests. Petition 131-18, Counselors Marissa Fleming and Marcus Dina Tally on behalf of Raul and Yeti Jimenez, to investigate and implement remedies to mitigate and/or prevent property damage to 162 Townsend Street resulting from motor vehicle incidents that frequently damaged the property's fencing. That was sent to DPW Subcommittee. Petition 161-18, Richard Timothy Pomelou, Ride More Heavy Duty Truck Class II Dealer's License, for approval to increase maximum number of vehicles for sale from 10 to 100 and allow, and vehicles allowed in staging area waiting to be dismantled from 126 to 320. That was granted.
Move the Public Safety Committee report be accepted.
I have a motion and second to accept the Public Safety Committee report. Speaking on the motion, Counsel Zarella.
I would ask that 130-18 be held out.
Second.
I, the councilor making the motion, would need to do so.
I'll hold out 130-18.
130-18 was my petition. This one?
Yes, Counsel Zarella wanted that held out.
Excluding 130-18. Speaking on the motion, Counsel Boishman.
I just want to make note that on 161-18, I'm in favor of that, but with the understanding that the man is going to maintain in front of the fence on Bemis roadside all the way up to the end of his property with trash and the overgrowth. That was the stipulation that I asked, and he said, yes, he would. So I'd like to note it in the record so we can, we have something to fall back on.
We can certainly include that in the minutes, Counsel Boishman.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Zarella.
To Counselor Boishman's point, I would just like to note that in my role on the zoning board, we've been monitoring Mr. Pomelo's property for quite some time now, and I can vouch for the fact that he takes probably better care of his property than 90% of the people in the city. So I do not believe that will be an issue. Thank you, Counselor.
Speaking on the motion, Counsel Squallia.
Can I just get clarification on 131-18? Is that to, is the proposal to send it to Public Works Committee?
Counsel Green.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
So I have a motion and second to approve the Public Safety Committee Oral Report excluding 130-18. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous, motion carries.
Move the Committee's recommendation on 130-18 be accepted.
Second.
I have a motion and second to accept the Committee's recommendation on 130-18, which was to send Commissioner Laxo for his review and feedback, correct?
Correct.
Speaking on the motion, Counsel Zarella.
I do not believe there's a formal conflict of interest on this, but seeing as I live only one street over from Romano Ave and drive it frequently, I am going to recuse myself from this vote.
Thank you, Counsel Zarella.
Speaking on 130-18.
Squallia.
Oh, sorry.
No problem. Speaking on the motion, Counsel Squallia.
I would like to see 130-18 be forwarded to the Public Works Committee as well. It seems that we can discuss it with Commissioner Laxo in a public meeting in that forum.
Speaking on the motion, Counsel Dina Tally.
It was decided by the committee that this go to Mr. Laxo directly, and the suggestion was made by the chairman of the DPW Public Works Committee. Thank you.
I have a motion and second to accept the recommendation from the Public Safety Committee on 130-18. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? One in opposition, motion carries. Eight to one. Public Works Committee, meeting of May 29th, 2018, Counsel Caddy.
Public Works met on May 29th, 2018. We had several petitions. 038-18, Counsel Paul Boishman, City Solicitor, Vincent Post Attari, petitions the city to ensure that property located at 150 Locore Street be provided access via public ways. The city would be required to cause a survey, obtain an appraisal, and perform a taking by eminent domain in order to correct the problem that was held. 048-18, Counselors Elizabeth Walsh and Marcus Dina Tally along with resident Mary Fritz to erect Jersey barriers at the corner of 400 Rosestone Road and Brittany Lane. That also was held. 104-18, Counsel Mike Kuschmerich to install a berm between Lyman and Caswell Street for the prop to be located at 131 Longwood Ave and repair existing berm on Lyman's side of the property. That was granted. 113-18, Counsel Mike Kuschmerich to repair or replace a plowed damage berm located at 64 Ryfield Road. That was, that was granted. 114-18, Counsel Mike Kuschmerich to repair or replace plowed damage berm located at 326 Blossom Street. That was granted. 132-18, Counsel Paul Boishman to establish a height limit for utility poles in the City of Fitchburg. That was held. 133-18, Counsel Amy Green on behalf of Sean Keating, 23 Monroe Street, to find remedy to mitigate damages happening at property located at 23 Monroe Street. Damage from snow plows is destroying both the fence and the stone wall at dislocation. Letter is enclosed with a petition. That was granted. 134-18, Counsel Amy Green on behalf of Jerry and Rose Ann Baldini, 51 Rainville Ave, to remove dangerous problematic trees located at 51 Rainville Ave. That was granted. 135-18, Counsel Elizabeth Walsh to fill small pothole in road in front of 20 Proctor Ave and install a berm in front of 20 Proctor Ave. It was amended to fill small pothole in road in front of 20 Proctor Ave, install a five-foot berm, and repair the driveway apron in front of Proctor Ave. That was granted as amended. 136-18, Counsel Amy Green on behalf of Sam Aringbar, 96 Lancaster Street, to request a solution for water damage happening at 96 Lancaster Street. That was granted. 137-18, Counsel Amy Green on behalf of Carol Russell, 2 Forest Park, to request a berm be installed at 2 Forest Park to eliminate property damage being caused by snow removal and water. That was granted. And lastly, 162-18, Counselors Marcus Starling and Joel Caddy on behalf of Donna Goodchild to repair a damaged berm at 109 Vine Street. That was granted.
Move the Public Works Committee report be accepted.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion and second to accept the Public Works Committee report. Speaking on the motion, Counsel Boishman.
I'd like to excuse myself on 135-18, that's my cousin, and I'm only going to say edits favoritism.
Can we exclude 135-18 from the report, counselors?
I may leave the room.
If you would, Counsel Boishman. Thank you. I have a motion and second to accept the Public Works Committee report excluding 1.
35-18?
35.
So do I have a motion and second to approve 135-18 as amended?
Motion.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. I have a motion and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous, motion carries.
Motion.
Move the rest of the Public Works Committee report be accepted.
I have a motion and second to accept the Public Works Committee report excluding 135-18. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous, motion carries. Thank you, counselors, I did that one backwards there. Items to be taken from City Property Committee for discussion and vote, I'd ask Commissioner Delain to join us at the center table. Counsel Zarella, if you would, just kindly read 158, 159-18 as they're coming out of your committee.
Certainly. 158-18, an order authorizing the City of Fitchburg to obtain a conservation restriction on a parcel of land in Ashby known as the Crocker Property as outlined in the enclosed order. And 159-18, an order authorizing the City of Fitchburg to purchase a certain parcel of land in Ashby known as the Craft Property located on Piper Road in Ashby to be funded through grant monies, owner donation, and division of water supply funds as outlined in the enclosed order.
Would 158-18 and 159-18 be accepted?
Giving suspension of the rules.
158-18 and 159-18 be suspension of the rule.
Second.
A motion and second for suspension of the rules on 158 and 159-18. Speaking on the matter, Counsel Boishman.
I have one question for Mr. Delain. Can I ask him a question?
Once we vote on suspension.
Oh, okay, all right.
Motion and second in favor of suspension of the rules. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous, the orders are before you.
Move 158-18 and 159-18 be granted.
Second.
I have a motion and second to grant 158 and 159-18. Speaking on the motion, Counsel Boishman.
Mr. Delain, John, a question for you. We're taking this property for the watershed, am I right?
Correct.
Now, my question to you, do we maintain these properties, or do we just let nature take its course?
On one parcel, it's a conservation restriction, so the owner has to follow strict requirements for maintaining it. They can't develop it, they can't dump junk on it, and we have to inspect it yearly. The other parcel will be managed under a forestry management plan and try to optimize some revenue from it while also protecting the interests of the watershed itself.
And the only thing I want to know when we take this land, how about that vine? You know that vine just grows everywhere and it kills?
Bittersweet.
Yeah, I don't know what you call it.
In some places, we will attempt to mitigate any invasive species so it doesn't overtake a area. On this particular property, we haven't observed anything like that, but if there is something like that, we'll try to make sure that we control that invasive species.
Okay, thank you. That's all I want to say.
Speaking on the motion, Counsel Green.
Is the money to be funded through grants, donation, and water supply funds, is that, is there enough money to purchase that property without touching any other city monies?
We have some money set aside, about $336,000 for watershed land purchases. We'll probably use about $100,000, $120,000 for this, to preserve these two properties, and the balance of it will be coming from the state. And in the case of one parcel, the Crocker parcel, the landowner is taking a reduced price, so eventually it actually results in a donation. But we have enough money in that fund that's dedicated only toward land protection, it can't be used for anything else.
And that will help to purchase the Craft Property?
Correct.
Thank you.
Counsel Dina Tally.
The Finance Committee met last Tuesday and already appropriated the funds and accepted the monies for 147-18 and 148-18. Those are the two items that we voted on in committee and just passed earlier. So these are just, to me, these two petitions are just a formality at this point.
One thing I would ask is that I have passed around some revised language for the orders, and I just received this, these requested revisions from the state yesterday. And basically, this is standard language that they're asking any city or town depending on, you know, the form of government to have this type of language in there. So I'd ask if we could substitute these or make these revisions to the orders, as I have shown. Basically, I highlighted the revisions that they're requesting.
Move that the orders be amended as requested?
Second.
I have a motion and second to amend 158 and 159-18 as outlined in the enclosed package. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is amended.
Move 158-18 and 159-18 be accepted as amended.
I have a motion and second to accept 158, 159-18 as amended. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous, motion carries. Thank you, Counsel. Orders, Finance.
Move 164-18 through 177-18 to send to Finance.
Second.
I have a motion and second to send 164 up to and including 177-18 to the Finance Committee. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous, motion carries. 178-18, order other, order that the mayor is authorized to execute a deed of conveyance of 14-gauge street parcel to a butters. Ian Brennan and Kelly Arvidson is outlining the enclosed order, reference petition 210-2017, and I'd ask that this be referred to the City Property Committee.
Move that be referred to the City Property Committee.
Second.
I have a motion and second to refer to the City Property Committee. Speaking on the motion, Counsel Zarella.
I would actually ask that this be taken under suspension of the rules because it's been going back and forth to various committees and subcommittees for many months now. The City, the Side Yard Sales Committee approved it.
I'm sorry.
The Assistant City Solicitor Tree has a couple of concerns.
So my concern is that we're following the proper procedure for disposal of city property. I realize that it went through the City Property Committee to get allocated to the Side Yard Sales Committee, but this is approval of the actual sale. And because we have to follow a specific process with disposal of city property, I do believe it's necessary to go there, not back to the Side Yard Sales Committee, but just to the City Property Committee.
That's right. We're sending back. Thanks for me. City property.
I have a motion and second to refer to the City Property Committee. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those in opposition? It is unanimous.
Sorry, Russ. Not thinking tonight.
Ordinance is 031-18.
Will 031-18 be sent to its third and final reading, enrolled, ordained, and advertised?
Second.
I have a motion and second to send 031-18 to its third and final reading, enrolled, ordained, and advertised. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous, motion carries. 060-18, an ordinance to amend the table of principal uses by amending Sections 181, 313, C, 14-a as follows. C, 14-a, seasonal outdoor dining, update chart with Y for L-I-I and C-N-A zones, reference petition 102-18, final reading.
Move 160-18 be sent to its third and final reading, enrolled, ordained, and advertised.
I have a motion and second to send 160-18 to its third and final reading, enrolled, ordained, and advertised. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous, motion carries. Petitions. Petitions.
Move 179-18 through 184-18 be sent to its respective committees and 180-18, 181-18, and 182-18 be sent to public hearings for July 5th, June 19th, and June 19th.
I have a motion and, do I have a, do I have a second?
Second, yes.
I have a motion and second to send 179-18 up to and including 184-18 to their respective committees, including 180, 81, and 82-18 to public hearings on July 5th, 19th, and 19th. Speaking on the motion, Counselor Boishman.
I would just send 184-18 to the head of the DPW, Lani Lasco, because we got the theater project here on Romano Ave and Canton Street, and it all, it's all fits into one.
Counselor, if I'm correct, no parking signs actually do need to go through public safety.
Yes, they do.
I understand that, but we're, we're trying to address the speed on Canton Street, and he can weigh in on that, on his, on the recommendations he's going to be making on that area?
We could, we could certainly send a communication to Commissioner Laxo and ask that any, anything that might impact the work of the Public Safety Committee, that he, he provides such feedback. Would that satisfy you, Counselor Boishman?
Okay, sir, it will satisfy me.
Okay. I have a motion and second. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous, motion carries. Counselors, just a quick announcements, maybe not so quick. This is regarding Civic Days for the events calendar, beginning June 30th, from 1:00 to 6:00 p.m. at the Nashua River Brewers Festival at Riverfront Park. It's $15 in advance and $20 at the door. You can buy tickets in advance at the Pittsburgh Municipal Offices, Gomes Liquors, Millstand Number Three, Cappy's Liquors, Partners Pub, and Wyman's Liquors. On July 1st will be the Long's Joe Classic, the Pittsburgh Downtown Critterium, again, Sunday, July 1st, beginning at 8:30 a.m. Still opportunities for sponsorships, volunteers, and certainly spectators. You know, I'd remind both fellow councillors and the public that, you know, this is a long and storied tradition, and we're certainly fortunate as a city to have something like the Long's Joe Classics. So encourage everyone to spend the day with their family, take your kids, enjoy truly unique Pittsburgh events. Again, we're lucky to have it, and certainly the race needs all the spectators it can get to certainly support the, the sponsorships as well. July 3rd, from 5:00 to 10:00 p.m., Block Party, Upper, Upper Common and Main Street. There's parking on the Boulder Drive access from Putnam Bridge, July 3rd, 10:00 p.m. fireworks. July 4th, 10:00 a.m., Annual Fourth of July Parade starts at Summer Street and goes to the Upper Common. July 8th, 5:00 p.m., Wally of the Boston Red Sox will be at Riverfront Park on Boulder Drive. July 8th, 6:00 to 7:00 p.m., Pittsburgh Duck Race at Riverfront Park. July 11th, the Wall That Heals Arrival. You can find more information on, on Facebook, but that'll be at Crocker Field. And July 12th through the 15th, Wall That Heals memorial, Crocker Field, 24 hours, day and night.